Good evening, everyone. Good evening. I feel like I've seen you all before.
Yes.
But welcome this evening to tonight's Blacksburg Town Council Candidate Forum hosted by the NAACP Montgomery County, Rafferty City, Floyd County Branch, and the League of Women Voters, Montgomery County. And so first, I'd like to introduce the presidents of each of our organizations to give some words of welcome, Ms. Jess Davis and Ms. Deborah Travis.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Montgomery County, Rafferty City, Floyd County Branch, of the NAACP and the League of Women Voters, we welcome you here tonight, and we really appreciate you taking the time out of your schedule to learn about the candidates. The NAACP is a nonpartisan organization along with the League of Women Voters, and our main goal is to educate and to inform our community of what's happening politically, but also to encourage you to cast that vote. So you have to be informed to do that. So we're so pleased that you're out here tonight. We also ask with the NAACP if you would join us in our civil rights and social justice advocacy programs. We have a lot of opportunity to do that, so we welcome everyone to be a part. And you can find us on the website, and if you have any questions at all, we do have a table out front where you can get some additional information. So thank you again, and here's Jess.
Awesome, thanks, Debbie. Yes, again, my name's Jess Davis, the president for the League of Women Voters from Montgomery County. We are a grassroots, nonpartisan organization working to defend democracy, and so we do that through educating, advocating, and getting folks out to vote. And so if you don't have your voter registration yet, or if you need it updated, please come see us outside at the table. Susan is ready to get you updated and all of that. We also have monthly meetings. Next Tuesday is our first Tuesday month, and so I invite you all. We did a book club. You don't have to have read the book. I still have quite a bit of it to go myself, but we would love to have you all. It is over the lunch hour, and so get more information outside, and we would love to see you there. Before I turn it over to Karen, I would like to give a shout out to Karen, who has done so much for putting these organizations together. It takes a lot to herd cats, and she is wonderful at herding the cats, so thank you, Karen.
Thank you so much. Before I turn the candidate forum over to our moderator this evening, I do want to introduce and thank our volunteers that are here tonight passing out cards so we can get all of you all's vitally important questions, but especially to our question-and-answer sorters who take the time to make sure that we have a variety of questions that can be answered by all, asked of all of the candidates. And so last week, Elizabeth Openchain and David Travis were our Q&amp;A sorters, and they're doing that again this evening, so I want to thank them for that. Really, it's hard work over here because y'all are invested in your community, which is good. So thank you to Beth and David. And so I would like to turn our forum over to Ms. Peggy Lane, who will serve as tonight's moderator.
Thank you, Karen, and thank you all for being here tonight. As you know, tonight's forum is for candidates running for the Blacksburg Town Council. Town Council has six members who serve staggered four-year terms, and this year we have five candidates who are running for three seats on council. In preparation for tonight's forum, all of the candidates were given five questions. We'll start with two or three of those questions, and all of the other questions will come from you. You should have received note cards when you came in tonight. If you do not have a note card, or you want another note card, raise your hand, and somebody will bring you a note card. Please write your question on the card, and then hold it up, and somebody will come pick it up and bring it up to our question sorters. All of the questions will be screened for clarity, variety, and to ensure that they're relevant to decisions that the town council can make. As moderator, I will address all of the questions to all of the candidates. So if you have a question for one candidate, you'll have to catch them after the forum because every question that comes up here is going to be given to all of the people on the panel. I will attempt to rotate the order in which the candidates are asked to respond. If I get confused with that, I hope you all will help me keep track. To make sure that we have time for as many questions as possible, please hold your applause until the end of the forum and refrain from reacting to the candidates in any way because interruptions will only reduce the amount of time that we have to hear from the candidates tonight. Each candidate will have two minutes to introduce themselves and tell us why they're running for office. Each candidate will have up to two minutes to respond to each question. We're using the timing system here in the council chambers tonight, so the green light will come on at the beginning of the two minutes, the yellow light will come on when there are 30 seconds left, and the red light will turn on when it's time to stop. And I will not hesitate to interrupt you if you do not observe the red light. Each candidate will have two minutes to make a closing statement when we wrap up, and during that time, they'll be free to respond to any of the previous questions. Is everybody ready?
Yes.
Timer's ready? All right. I will start by asking the candidates to introduce themselves in alphabetical order, starting with Susan Anderson.
Thank you. I want to thank the League of Women Voters and the NAACP for organizing this forum tonight, and to thank each of you here for viewing and participating. I'm Susan Anderson, and I'm running for reelection to Blacksburg Town Council on a platform of shared community values: diverse, affordable housing, a high quality of life for residents, smart growth, abundant recreational opportunities, openness in government with active citizen participation in civic affairs. I earned my master's degree in mathematics in 1982 from Virginia Tech and taught there for 40 years, retiring in 2023 as a senior instructor emerita. I have been elected for town council five times and have served four terms as vice mayor, the second woman to hold that position. I'm running on my record of service and accomplishments. I have gained valuable leadership experience on council and currently serve on the Housing and Community Development Advisory Board, and the Downtown Revitalization Committee Chair, and the New River Valley Regional Commission Vice Chair. I'm president of the Board of Directors of the Women's Resource Center of the New River Valley, the facilitator for the Clothesline Project, and on the leadership team of Our Bodies, Our Choice. Significant and visible progress has occurred during my tenure, including increasing our workforce and student housing stock, greatly increasing our town parklands, and helping town businesses through our new business solutions manager and the upcoming retail incubator. However, much work still needs to be done: increasing diverse and affordable housing, dealing with the Virginia Tech's growth, filling empty storefronts, enhancing quality of life so our citizens and our town not only survive but thrive. We must strive to fulfill our comprehensive plan's vision for a vibrant, diverse, sustainable, and livable Blacksburg. Thank you.
Thank you. Please hold your applause. It will only cut into the amount of time we have available. Our next candidate is Daryl Campbell.
Hello. I'm Daryl Campbell. Some of you know me from events around campus, like with the United Campus Workers. Some of you may know me from my involvement in protests in town, the fact that I have been one of the speakers at those protests. And some of you might know me through my work with the Blacksburg Young Professionals. I'm part of the Social Committee, and I actually am part of the welcoming crew, if you will. We encourage a lot of people to try and stay in town, although that's been very difficult since we don't have that diverse, that diverse housing that Susan just mentioned. Now, when I was younger, I was always told it takes a village. You know, it takes a village to raise a kid. It takes a village to have a family and enjoy that family, and it takes a village to actually welcome new people into this town. I've done that work. I care about those people that I've met. I know that it takes a village, and we need to be that village. Blacksburg needs to become that village for the community that we need. Now, many of us are just average people. We're average workers. We have our needs, our wants. We want spaces to walk and enjoy nature. We want a place to call home that we know will be there. And we want places to shop, walk around, actually enjoy the community that we're in, with restaurants that are right around the corner as well. We are Blacksburg. We have to make sure that we take care of each other, and I'm here to make sure of that. Now, we need to choose people who have the experience, similar to Susan and Lauren, and we need to choose people who also have the right values, and I think that I am that kind of person. I've done a lot of work with the UCW in going from being underground and actually going public at Virginia Tech, and I'm currently working on a project to bring union recognition to high school students in Roanoke.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Next, Lauren Coliver.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Coliver. I've had the honor of serving two terms on the Blacksburg Town Council, and I'm running for a third because I believe in the power of community and the importance of showing up. Like many of you, I didn't grow up here. My family moved to Blacksburg in 2009 when my husband took a job at Montgomery Regional Hospital, not with the university, but still deeply rooted in service. We've raised our four kids here, getting to know this town through Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts, swim lessons and robotics, summer school plays and summer musicals. This community has become our home in every way. We even now consider ourselves honorary Hokies with one son attending Virginia Tech. For 12 years, my husband and I owned and operated an independent medical clinic. He saw the patients, and I ran the business. We treated each patient like family because that's the kind of care we believe in. I'm a serial entrepreneur. I've run a photography business, the clinic, and two other small businesses. If you're a small business owner, you know the work never really stops. You're the manager, the marketer, the customer service rep, and the janitor. You do it because you believe in your work and because you believe in your town. Small businesses are vital to our local economy, and I've seen firsthand how challenging and rewarding that journey can be. I wasn't a marketing or business major. I was a biology major, but I learned how to tell my story, and I've learned how to listen to others, too. During my time on town council, I've served on the boards of the New River Valley Agency on Aging, the Montgomery County Economic Development Council, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and the Montgomery County Tourism Board. I've also been active in the Chamber of Commerce, Main Street Connect, and the American Business Women's Association. I show up, I listen, I work hard to build bridges and get things done. I believe we all have superpowers, and mine are empathy and connection. My favorite part of serving is helping people find what they need. I don't pretend to have all the answers, but I know how to listen and how to connect people with the right resources. At a time when so much feels divided and uncertain, I believe local leadership matters more than ever. We need leaders who show up with open ears and open hearts, who understand the value of collaboration and the strength of community.
Thank you. Joel Goodhart.
First, I'd like to thank the NAACP and League of Women Voters for hosting this forum, and I'd like to thank you all for coming out and taking an active interest in what happens with our town. I'm Joel Goodhart, and I'm running to serve on Blacksburg Town Council. I was born and raised in the New River Valley. I grew up in Christiansburg, where my wife is also from, and after we had kids, we decided that Blacksburg is the place where we wanted to raise our family. For the past several years, I've had a persistent interest in town government and how the decisions we make as a community impact our lives in tangible ways. I completed the Town Citizens Institute in 2024, and I've since joined our Housing Committee to get a direct perspective on some of the challenges and issues that we have with regard to housing and affordability in Blacksburg. Growing up between two boroughs since 1992, I have a deep connection to this community and the NRV. I studied business management at Virginia Tech and worked for a local nonprofit called the YMCA at Virginia Tech. And since then, I've pivoted my career into education, where I've worked as an educator for MCPS. Through my education, work, and community involvement, I've come to realize that I truly enjoy work that is fundamentally about people. How do we help people connect with each other? How do we help them become more resilient? How do we bring positive growth to their lives? And I see serving on town council as an opportunity to continue that work that is fundamentally about helping people. As a dad with a young family, there are three things that I want to focus on if I'm elected to town council. Those three things are connection, resilience, and livability in Blacksburg. How do we connect people to each other in meaningful ways that form real relationships? How do we ensure the town's infrastructure and services can endure the effects of growth and things like climate change? And how do we increase the quality of life for residents when it comes to growth, housing, and transportation? If I can do a good job of improving those three things in our town, then I will consider my time on town council a successful endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you. And James Harder.
All right. Like everyone else, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and the NAACP for putting on this event tonight. I'm James Harder, and I believe that government can be a force for good: strengthening our economy, supporting families, protecting our environment, and fostering a vibrant community life. I bring a strong track record of experiences that prepare me for this role. I've worked in the Capitol Hill Office of Representative Rick Boucher in DC, managed strategic planning in the Office of the President at Virginia Tech, secured economic development grants through Go Virginia in the Department of Computer Science at Virginia Tech, served on the Board of Forestry for Virginia, and led projects with the City of Wilmington's City Manager's Office. I also hold a PhD, MPA, and undergraduate degree in politics, where I focused on the study of government. More importantly, I'm Blacksburg-born and bred. I went to Margaret Beeks. My grandmother taught at Margaret Beeks. My mom went to Margaret Beeks. My daughter will actually walk through the doors of Margaret Beeks tomorrow morning. I love this community and really love that I've come from here and returned after about 10 years of being gone. I coach soccer for the New River United. I'm on the board of the Community Foundation for the NRV, and I ride bike buses each week with my daughter. I love this town through and through. I want to help Blacksburg thrive for its next generation. That means investing in arts, culture, and recreation, supporting public spaces and programs that make our town a great place to live, work, and play. It means protecting our natural beauty and advancing sustainability so Blacksburg remains healthy and resilient. And it means ensuring our economy works for everyone: supporting small businesses, nurturing startups, and promoting policies that create good-paying jobs. That's the kind of leadership I'll bring to town council. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll start with some of the questions that have come from the audience. Our first question is, what issue or issues made you decide to run for town council? And what would you like to do about them? And I'm going to start with Daryl. Be sure to sit up close to the microphone so everybody can hear you.
So I decided to join or run for town council because I am of a group that has seen their dream disappear in Blacksburg. With the amount of development that we've had over the 16 years that I've been here, the cost of all of the homes have gone up to an unreasonable price that is not affordable for a single 35-year-old guy, no matter how much I'm making. Now, a lot of my friends have also had to leave this town. They're still in the area, a lot of them, but they're in Christiansburg, in Narrows, in Reiner, and I enjoy going over to their places, but I know that they all want to be in this town. They all enjoy coming back to hang out with me whenever I ask them to. And of course, I go to their barbecues and whatnot, but we decided to live in this area because we love Blacksburg. There's a lot that can be done, and I'd like to be part of finding those solutions and bringing those about so that we can make things more, well, less expensive, let's say, for an individual like myself. I understand that home property values are based on everything around, and I don't want to decrease any of those, but we do need to find a way to get young professionals into town so that we can continue to build the community that we need. Workers are struggling right now, and as we all are. I mean, we're all workers in this room. We all know what it's like to try and make a dollar stretch, and we need to figure out how to help each other. With my lens through workers' rights and everything that I've done for the union, I think that, I think that there's no way that Blacksburg would survive without the young professionals. We need to find that space for them.
Thank you. Lauren.
To keep Blacksburg thriving, we must listen to residents, build a stronger and more resilient economy, and address our housing crisis head-on with smart, community-centered solutions. Good governance starts with listening and responding. One of my proudest moments last year came when I met with several parents concerned about our youth athletic fields and facilities. We sat down with the 10-year Parks and Recreation Plan, identified where we were falling short, and most importantly, those parents showed up at a public hearing in this room to share their voices. The town manager and the Parks and Rec team took that input seriously, and just in time for our capital improvement plan discussions, we were able to allocate funding to improve fields, dugouts, bleachers, and more. That's how local government should work: residents speak, we listen, and we act. We must build an economy that's more than just a college-dependent. We want a Blacksburg that works for everyone: families, seniors, students, small businesses, and faculty. We're working with the Blacksburg Partnership and Downtown Strategies to attract and retain new, unique businesses like you'd see in Charlottesville, Harrisonburg, or Asheville. By filling vacant commercial spaces and supporting year-round businesses, we can create a more resilient economy that isn't so seasonal or dependent on student foot traffic. Housing is the number-one challenge, as Daryl mentioned, and we need bold, thoughtful solutions. Virginia and Blacksburg in particular is in a housing crisis. We've felt it here for years. Homes that could be affordable for first-time homebuyers or families are being bought up by out-of-town investors and rented to students. This led to a drop in owner occupancy from 60% to 44%, increased lifestyle conflicts between student renters and long-term residents, fewer school-aged children in our neighborhoods, and lower K-12 public school enrollment. Building more luxury student apartments isn't the answer. Those units charge $1,200 plus per bedroom, and many students still opt for single-family rentals. We need more designated student housing, encouraging redevelopment of existing complexes at higher density, and affordable, and housing options that are affordable for residents, not just students. I believe in a Blacksburg that listens, grows smartly, and works for everyone.
Thank you. Joel.
So what made me want to run for Blacksburg Town Council? I think circling back to the three things that I kind of think through when I'm considering the issues that we're engaging. The first one is going to be, we'll go with livability. So, and I would put housing affordability into that, that bucket. So some of the things that we could do to address housing affordability in Blacksburg, and this comes from, if no one else has heard of this organization, it's called Strong Towns, and they are very proactive in trying to figure out how do we, you know, crack the code on housing. So one of the things we could do is we could allow single-family home conversions. So let people turn their homes into duplexes or triplexes. So you take one unit of housing on the same lot, you turn it into two or three. You could permit backyard cottages, so you could legalize small additional homes, ADUs in every residential area. So Blacksburg has done this, which I was very, very happy to see. I'm not sure how many we've built, but I would be very interested in looking into how can we get more of those. We could legalize starter homes, make it possible to build smaller homes on smaller lots in more places. We could eliminate minimum lot sizes, so allow more housing in existing neighborhoods without artificial barriers that prevent that from happening. We could end parking mandates for housing, so stop requiring costly, unnecessary parking that makes housing more expensive, and instead look at parking contextually to see what makes sense for that site. And streamline the approval process for these types of smaller developments, so cut out red tape and speed up and lower the cost of new housing. With connection, since I only have 20 seconds, I really want to talk about kids in this town, so I have a five- and a three-year-old, and I'm constantly thinking about how do I get them out in our community so they can have face-to-face time with their friends, with other people in the community? And for me, that comes back to transportation options and what is accessible to children, and that's something I would definitely want to invest in. Thank you.
Thank you. James.
All right. I like many of the other candidates think housing is extremely important, and I think that will definitely be something that we'll talk a little bit later. So I'm actually going to pause on that. Certainly a motivating factor for one of the reasons I ran for office, but I think one of the things that I bring to bear that's distinctive or even potentially unique is my interest in working towards economic development. During the past five years, I've worked in the Department of Computer Science managing Go Virginia grants, and we've been working towards bringing new startups to the area. The work was motivated mostly by the idea that we have a lot of students who have entrepreneurial ideas. They're interested in trying to bring those ideas to market while they're students here, and if we provide resources, like giving them space to found their businesses, support through mentorship and things like that, that we can actually get them to stay and build businesses that might grow here. A lot of the businesses that we've seen be prosperous in the CRC kind of formed that model, too. It's faculty members, students who are bringing ideas to bear. I would love to do some ways to, or find some ways to make that happen here in Blacksburg. I think we can do more to do that kind of things where we're working with our network, the RBTC, Go Virginia, and Campus-Based Entrepreneurship Network to encourage more businesses to come here. I think we can also do things like incentives and partnerships that might help give tax abatements, rent subsidies, and town-university partnerships that might increase the amount of new businesses that get founded here in town. I also like the idea of streamlined permitting that can help simplify and speed up the zoning and lighting processes for small businesses, creative new ideas, retail, and restaurants. And also really like the idea of new niche support that would encourage businesses to serve, that serve unmet needs, like family-friendly restaurants, experiential retail, specialty grocery stores that might support some more things in downtown than vape shops and bars. I also like the idea of working closer with the university. That's something you'll hear from me a bit tonight, is I think we can do more to working with the university, and I think-
Thank you, James.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Susan.
Thank you. I have many reasons for running for town council and many priorities. My main priority is creating diverse housing options while protecting the integrity of neighborhoods, to attract and support working families, young professionals, retirees, and students. Blacksburg needs housing appropriate for diverse income levels and lifestyles. A housing trust fund, a community land trust, and allowing attached-and-detached accessory apartments have been implemented during my watch. Protecting our neighborhoods from encroachment and decay is vital. Other priorities includes include wise management of growth and development to ensure economic visibility and viability and community livability. Development and redevelopment should be guided by our shared community values and managed by our comprehensive, comprehensive plan's vision. Clustering and infill will preserve green space. Public and alternative transportation are key components of sustainable growth. The continued revitalization of downtown as a pedestrian-friendly, vibrant retail and arts center is huge. A thriving town core is essential to Blacksburg's health and character. Temporary streetscape improvements have been completed on Draper Road. Greater streetscape improvements are planned, including public restrooms on Draper. And we have a new business manager and are planning a retail incubator at the Old Cook's Clean Center on Main Street. So in summary, my many priorities include: creating diverse housing options, including workforce, young professional, and senior housing; guiding development and redevelopment through shared community values; managing sustainable growth through adherence to our comprehensive plan; protecting neighborhood integrity and improving community livability; enhancing public and alternative transportation, preserving green space and natural areas; pursuing more recreational opportunities for residents of all ages; enhancing collaborative relationships with our local governments; ensuring openness in government; encouraging citizen participation; and restoring people's faith in government and in democracy.
Thank you, Susan. And our next question will address affordable housing, a topic that is on many people's minds. This questioner asserts that rent has increased by 39% in the past five years and wants to know, what are your plans to increase affordable housing and reduce rent inflation? And we'll start this with Lauren.
Thank you. I wish I had an answer for reducing rent inflation, but that is above my pay grade at the moment. Blacksburg must remain a place where everyone, students, families, workers, and seniors can afford to live and thrive. We are actively working to protect and expand affordable housing. Blacksburg has partnered with the New River Valley Regional Housing Trust Fund and supports the use of land trust to permanently preserve affordability of housing stock. We've adopted a small lot ordinance that allows for a higher-density housing, especially in infill areas, without requiring massive new developments. This helps create more affordable options in established neighborhoods while respecting community character. We offer waived utility connection fees for qualifying affordable housing developments, removing a key cost barrier for builders focused on housing lower-income residents. Housing affordability isn't just about cost, it's about access, opportunity, and equity. Workforce housing for our teachers, nurses, first responders, and essential workers should be, who should be able to live in the town where they work. Affordable housing keeps our community strong and connected. For our students and young professionals, as a university town, we want our graduates and young professionals to see a future in Blacksburg, not feel forced out due to rising prices. And for our seniors, who want to downsize without leaving the community that they've built their lives in. Local leadership matters, and we are using the tools we have and fighting for more. I've supported projects and policies that preserve incentivize and create affordable housing, from partnerships with regional nonprofits to zoning updates. I believe in using local levers creatively, like land policy, zoning, and financial incentives to create lasting affordability. But we also know that state and federal support is critical, and we will advocate for additional resources to meet the need.
Thank you. Joel.
So I am currently on Blacksburg's-
So I am currently on Blacksburg's Housing Committee, and there was a housing study done several years ago that showed that in this region, so not just Blacksburg but the region, we needed 5,000 units of housing to kind of start to stabilize prices. And I believe so far, combined with all of our affordable housing projects, and this includes grants from other branches of government, we've got about 300 units, some of them not yet constructed. So that leaves 4,700 units that we still need. So the need is great, and sometimes I wonder, like, how do we get to that 5,000 figure? How do we get this faster? Because if we go about it, I think using larger developers, you get these really large projects that I think kind of scare people because the growth is explosive. Cambridge Street is an example of that. But some of the reforms I mentioned were like allowing a single-family home to convert into a duplex. I think maintains the character of the neighborhood because it still looks the same, but instead of having one house, you have two. I like to think of my house a lot. I'm constantly dreaming, what does housing look like? What is something I can do? And something I could do is turn my basement into an apartment. So that's something that a student can rent from, not from some landlord who doesn't care about them, but actually a homeowner. I could build a backyard cottage in my backyard, and I could rent that out to someone else. So you're taking my single-family home on a quarter-acre lot that is one housing unit and turning it into three. That is how you incrementally start to add dens- density to our neighborhoods without fundamentally changing the character, but you're bringing in a lot of smaller-scale developers that have a lot more buy-in to the people they're renting to and their neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. James?
You know, I, I share the concerns of the five other people here on the stage. Affordable housing, or just housing with large, is an incredibly important priority here for our town moving forward. I think, I, I pulled a quote from Leslie Hager Smith's address at the beginning of the, I think the beginning of the year this year, and she said, "Like it or not, 2/3 of Blacksburg's population is students, and that figure is only increasing. Town Council has not approved a major student housing project since 2019." You know, that's not true anymore. That was something she said at the beginning of the year, so the 801 project has gone through. But I do feel like we have a drastic backlog of the amount of housing that's available for students, and that truly is putting a crimp on all other types of housing. I think that we need to do more to make sure that we're encouraging developers by creating streamlined processes for them to submit bids and to execute bids. I also think there needs to be streamlined processes for resubmitting bids. I've talked to several developers in town, as I've been working with stakeholders and meeting people throughout this time, and they said oftentimes they have projects that they would love to kind of pivot, you know, COVID kind of made retail space not as important to the downtown old, old middle-school property. And I think we'd love to, I would love to encourage people to put maybe more housing on that kind of a project. I also think we need to do things that could encourage existing rental housing that's already in the town to be redeveloped. And I think we could have some incentives that might take some of the properties and apartments that are in town or, and could be redeveloped into higher density and create places where we would allow higher density because they're already rental spaces. You know, this summer, I read Ezra Klein and Derek Thompson's book, Abundance, and I only have 19 seconds, so I'm going to go quick here, but I really found what they were saying there is really important, which is regulation gets in the way of a lot of the things that we want to accomplish with government. And I think we need to take a serious look at all of the types of things that we need to do to make sure that we streamline processes for more houses to be built in the Blacksburg area.
Thank you. Susan?
I'm distressed by and have been working hard on housing. The biggest challenge facing Blacksburg, we critically need more, more diverse, and more affordable housing stock. Blacksburg has accomplished much, but much remains to be done. We allocated over 2.5 million in American Rescue Plan Act funds to create the Blacksburg Affordable Housing Fund. These fund three projects, all in the construction phase currently. 20 owner-occupied homes at Stru- Struples Ridge, 11 Habitat for Humanity owner-occupied townhomes on Airport Road for 60% to 80% average median income folks, Legacy on Main rental apartments at the corner of Country Club and South Main Street. A recently-approved development proposal, 801 North Main, proffered 1.3 million for the Blacksburg Affordable Housing Fund. In 2022, the town in Montgomery County established a community land trust called the New River Home Trust. The land is owned by a nonprofit, so the land is not included in the home purchase price, protecting home affordability long-term. Blacksburg now has homes in that trust. Future homes include Struples Ridge and the Airport, Airport Road Habitat Homes. Town Council allows both attached and detached units, such as garage apartments, to be built. These units increase housing stock in general and aid in housing affordability. Town Council has created small-lot zoning districts, which will allow for more modest housing on smaller lots. The town has joined a New River Valley Housing Fund developed by the New River Regional Commission and contributes annually. This fund's first investment will be 28 townhomes at the Old Prices Fork School. These are additional units than what's already there. We have the option to waive water and sewer availability fees for affordable housing developments. I'm a member of our town's Housing and Community Development Advisory Board with Joel, and we work on housing affordability, review potential affordable housing projects, and suggest funding allocations.
Thank you, Susan. Darrell?
So I hear a lot of good ideas, and whoever wrote that question, very observant for you to realize it was about 39%. No one's talking about the reason that this happens, that 10% increase every single year by these landlords. So for example, I worked at CMG for about four years. Every single year, it was a 10% increase that they did. Very difficult for students to deal with, but they always thought, oh, their parents are taking care of it, their parents are from Nova, that's fine. To Joel's point, we have to get 4,700 more homes to be able to stabilize things. I do think a lot of the ideas from the Strong Towns group is actually one of the great ways of getting there. I personally want to live in, in a tiny home myself, but they're now like $150 to build, so pricing is a little out there. And I think that someone forgets to mention, or that people forget to mention all of the vacant homes that are out there that are only used for game days. There are certain things that we can do about those, but we could also come up with a, a new creative idea where if somebody would like to move into a different location, they can put up their house on a certain area, a certain directory, let's say, and it will more than likely go to someone who would be a young professional, or, and there could be a tax incentive with that. I think that we need to really get down to the root of the problem, though. All of these ideas are good, and they all get us closer, but we need to do the analysis to actually figure out what's going on in the town and figure out how to fix that issue. There are a lot of smart people in this town. James being especially one of them. I think that we can use his skills to figure that kind of thing out. I don't think that he needs to be on Town Council for it, but I do appreciate him.
Thank you.
Do we have the ability to respond, or are we two minutes, two minutes?
Well, we really would not be able to get to very many questions if we allowed that, just given the number of candidates. And I'm going to go in a slightly different direction with our next question. What do you see as options for traffic safety around town, particularly around the circle at Prices Fork and North Main, but don't be limited to that location? So, traffic safety improvements. And we'll start this one with Joel.
This is an issue I think about a lot. I actually printed something out. This is where the student was killed recently on Prices Fork, next to Turner Street. At the, he was waiting on the sidewalk at the bus stop when, I think it was a truck, was trying to swerve and avoid another vehicle and flipped, and he was crushed. So I think there is a lot to do. And if you look at the street, you'll notice something about it. It's designed like a highway. So how we approach traffic safety, normally, there's kind of three Es that we use. The first one is education. So we'll try things like posting on social media, saying like, hey, drivers, be aware, you know, pedestrians, pedestrians, quit looking at your phone, everyone be safe on the road. So we'll try to educate people. The second E that we use is enforcement. So this is things like traffic speeding cameras, where we try to ticket you if you're going too fast. Police officers posted up to try to catch you driving too fast. But there's this third E that I would love to bring into the conversation, and that's engineering. So when you design a road like this, that we've changed the speed limit to 25 miles an hour, but it looks like the interstate, how fast are you going to drive? Even if you're like me and you really care about not killing somebody, how fast does this make you want to drive? It makes you want to drive faster than 25. And if you drive 25 right now, there's going to be people passing you because the context of the street says we need to go fast. And I think the way you change that is not wait kind of five years to do a design and a study and, and the full build-out. You quickly, and you, you go, okay, how was this individual killed? What caused it? Why? Why? You go out and you fix it. You use traffic cones if you have to, but you go and do something.
Thank you.
Yes, a complex issue, and certainly, I think you bring up a case that, you know, I actually was there the day that happened, just kind of driving through. It's really scary in that intersection. But I, I think that kind of does bring up some of the ways that I would start to find out how we can make traffic more safe. It's, A, it's about listening. It's about going out into the community and learning about where kind of people who live in neighborhoods, people who are in the businesses that are around there, and how do we find places where there really are traffic problems? I think everybody's seen a student dart across that road at some point in time here recently, and I do think we need to do more to, to make some things that might be in place that would help create more safety around that intersection. Another thing is about data. We're seeing more work, more cars and vehicles kind of heading through our roads at this point in time, and I think council's even taken some steps recently to, to work towards making the speed limit going down South Main a little bit lower. And I think your point is well-taken, that we could lower some speed limits in some of these very high congestion areas that could create a lot more safety around. And then last, I think we've got to do everything that we can to create transit enhancements, you know, public transit and making sure that we're funding that up. Again, council's done a great job of making that free, encouraging more people to use that kind of thing. If we can create more density, this also helps on the housing side of things, but when we put more density right around campus, it does create places where we can manage it more, and you create less vehicles that are on our roadways. And I do think that we need to make sure that we're approving more of the projects that we need for affordable housing, especially those that are for students directly in the footprint or shadow of the university community, to make sure that the students have very clear throughfares of how they walk to campus, but it takes their cars and them darting across roadways off, off the, off the table.
Thank you. Susan?
There are many things that we can do to work on safety. One thing at the roundout, roundabout specifically, is making sure that we have lower speed limits. There are many studies that say the lower the speed, the, the less fatal an accident can be. So again, I think what we've just done recently in lowering some of our speed limits on Main Street and some of our downtown streets helps with that kind of thing. Enforcement of speed limits is very, very important. I think particularly when, with the new semester beginning, if we can train all of our new people in town, that we are really serious about the lower speed limits and enforce our speed limits, that will really, really help. Another thing I think that can help is educating our pedestrians. I'm a pedestrian, I walk just about everywhere, but I see many people with buds in their ears and not paying a bit of attention to whatever's going on around them. And we can have cyclists flying by on sidewalks where they shouldn't be. We have pedestrians walking out into the street without looking both ways. I think we need to educate our public that Tech has a, has a program that they call Heads Up Hokeys, and maybe we should extend that, that educational program to the town. Another thing that can really help with safety are road diets. We are working on road dieting Patrick Henry and North Main Street in, in the near future. What that means is instead of having the four lanes, like you all are talking about, the freeway, you narrow it down to one lane in either direction with turn lanes, with bicycle lanes, so that the traffic is slower and will be easier for our pedestrians to cross. Another thing that we're working on is public transportation. The New River Valley Regional Commission is actually doing a study about the interconnectivity of our transit systems, and again, if we can-
Thank you, Susan.
-cars off the road, it would be good.
Darrell?
So a lot of these ideas are great. Honestly, I really like that you're working on doing the road dieting. I think that is actually one of the best things. That's something that I've, I would have put on myself. We do need creative ideas for all of this. The traffic safety concerns also come in where people don't have the ability to walk everywhere. I'm lucky enough to live by that roundabout, but a lot of people who come into town don't live right over there, which means that they come off of 460, and they're flying when they're coming off of 460. No matter what way you're trying to cross the road, it's always difficult. And I always do my best to wait for everybody to stop before I actually step into the road. It's a difficult problem. It is very, very hard to fix that kind of issue because we are such a car-centric country. But I do think, similar to what James was saying, adding some density, getting people to actually live in town, so that way we don't have vacant homes and we don't have people who need to drive everywhere. They can take the option of riding their bike, similar to how Joel did when he got here. I, these are all great options, but we have to make it easy enough and accessible enough to be able to do these things. Once we get there, then of course, we can start thinking about actually dieting all of the roads in town. I'd be okay with that. I'd like to ride my bike more. I'd like to even skate down the road and feel safe again, rather than have to, having to do it in the middle of the night, when it's still not safe. But I, we, there are a lot of creative solutions, there are a lot of other models from other towns. We can utilize any of those kinds of models, put them in a testing atmosphere and see what happens. It just takes a little bit of devotion to creativity in that way. I do have that, and I hope that you guys also agree. Thank you.
Lauren?
This is such an important issue, and we, we know that when we decrease the speed limits, we definitely decrease the severity of potential pedestrian and vehicle accidents. You've seen the summer that we, we decreased the speed limits in downtown and on Prices Fork. When we were first discussing that on Prices Fork, and it was just after that awful, awful incident, we did take action as quickly as possible. One of the things I wish we could do is have, like, in elementary school zones, you have the flashing lights, as in a school zone. And it was actually proposed at the General Assembly and did not pass to allow for universities to be considered school zones, but they're not. It's not the same category. But I would love to see flashing lights because that Prices Fork corridor is where we see so many students crossing the street, and that is the highest likelihood of where you're going to have an incident. Pie in the sky, if I could do anything, I would love to see a pedestrian walkway across Prices Fork. We've talked about that, the money's not there, but I, I went to school at JMU in Harrisonburg, and one of, one of the major improvements they've made is they have pedestrian walkways over that. We used to play Frogger across Main Street there, and it was as dangerous as it is here at Prices Fork. So those issues, we have cameras on, Montgomery County has instituted cameras on school buses. So now every time someone goes around a school bus, they get a picture and they get a ticket in the mail. And then we also, there's a potential of having that in and around school zones. We, we've looked at that as a town and the systems that are available to us, there's some legality issues, and we haven't instituted that yet, but that has been proposed, and we may go through with that. Me being a mother of high school students who drive to school, say my son is driving my car that is registered in my name-
Thank you, your time's up.
I'd like to know how that ended.
I get the ticket.
Our next question asks, "What can the town do to better prepare for natural disasters?" And this time, we'll start with James.
Yeah, resiliency and environmental issues are really very important to me, and I think we've seen kind of in Asheville, you know, a town that you think probably doesn't have the need to be really scared of something like a, a natural disaster, like a hurricane, impacting them. It's definitely something that Blacksburg needs to take seriously, too. I guess even to some degree, we were burned by that, too. I certainly remember boiling water during that almost month of time there. So I, I think that resiliency is a really important thing. One of the first things I would do is to try to look for some of the places that the town might be vulnerable for that type of thing. I'm sure that like a hurricane, especially with the amount of rivers and places around here, could be a major issue. So looking at a town, you know, doing a study and looking at where are some of these problems. I'm also a big believer in looking at what other places have done. I think reaching out to Asheville and kind of seeing what they've done to actually make their system better for governments and- their system better for governments and, and making sure that they're better prepared for the next challenge would be a great idea. And then I think lastly, it's really about making sure that we work with the developers who are going to start to encourage new projects and making sure that those projects, when they come online, are incorporating the types of things that you'd need to do to make sure that those buildings are ready for that kind of, you know, as climate change starts to impact more, are ready for that once in a hundred, once in 500 year event that might be happening. And, you know, not to add another regulation or another qualification on what our projects will look at, but we definitely need to be making sure that we're taking care of the environment and preparing for those kind of drastic situations because they are happening at a much increased pace. And yeah, we should be ready and resilient.
Thank you. Susan?
Town Council adopted on August 12th, a resolution adopting the New River Valley Hazard Mitigation Plan 2025 update. Blacksburg participated in the preparation of the multi-jurisdictional plan, the New River Valley Hazard Mitigation Plan, which identifies mitigation goals and actions to reduce or eliminate long-term risk to people and property in Blacksburg from the impacts of future hazards and disasters. The plan will be updated no less than every five years. In chapter six of that plan, it states, "The town of Blacksburg's principal natural hazard is recurrent flooding. Blacksburg is located atop the eastern continental divide where Toms and Strubles Creeks flow into the New River. These two creeks, along with Cedar Run, a tributary of the Roanoke River and Slate Branch, are of the most concern for flood conditions. Flooding primarily occurs in the low-lying areas of the town and is the result of heavy rains of a localized storm, tropical storm, or combination rain and snow melt in the area." Blacksburg also has some risks associated with wildfire, drought, and earthquakes that can be mitigated. And as a side, we all know that ice storms in the winter can be really harmful for us too. It goes on to say, "Emergency operation plans are in place in the police department, the fire department, our rescue squad, and the public works department. Planning, covering, sorry, plans covering various situations are in place in the engineering department, the finance department, and the technology department. And the town also maintains a comprehensive emergency management strategic plan." So there's always much to do on this, but, but we have been doing our homework.
Thank you. Daryl?
So this is actually a little bit more my wheelhouse as far as sustainability because I have a master's in natural resources with a certificate in leadership in global sustainability from Virginia Tech. I think that the mitigation plan is actually amazing, and I'm glad that you were on the team to actually adopt it. I was at the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors meeting the other night, and it was brought up, and I was actually extremely excited with everything going on. I think that's an amazing place to start, and that's, that gives us that perfect plan. It's, I will say, it is a little bit difficult coming up with new things when my idea was just said right before me, but, but I, I would love to have the opportunity to actually work with people on this. I would love to figure out how we can help everybody in the area, and not just within the town of Blacksburg, because that plan speaks about, I think it was 10 different groups, maybe even more. But we would have to help people down by the river. We would have to help people up in Clayter, Clayter Lake, sorry. We need to help people in Radford. There are people all over. We can't do this alone. When we actually need, when we need aid, when it comes time for an emergency situation, we shouldn't restrict ourselves to just our locality. We need to incorporate everybody, and then we need to also have their back when it comes time. Now I know it's going to be difficult in the NRV as far as everybody being able to help everyone else, but we can create that network now. That's the beginning of that network. We can absolutely utilize that in that plan to be able to go forward and make sure we have a resilient Blacksburg.
Thank you. Lauren?
Emergency preparedness is not just about reacting. It's about planning ahead, building strong partnerships, and using every tool we have to keep our community safe. Regional partnerships are essential to effective emergency response. The New River Valley Regional Commission has been a key partner in uniting localities across our region to address major crises together, including the COVID-19 response effort and the water crisis after Hurricane Helene last year. These collaborations have shown that we are stronger when we work together, sharing resources, information, and support across town and county lines. In, during the COVID-19 pandemic, I, I stepped up to help volunteer with the local response teams, making calls for the vaccine clinics and working at the regional vaccine clinics in Radford. And when systems didn't exist, we built our own. We used Google Sheets and SignUp Genius to schedule thousands of vaccine appointments. And fun fact, Google Sheets caps off at 8,000 lines because we hit that several times. Our region's COVID response was lauded by the state as an example of coordination and resourcefulness. We must invest in long-term proactive infrastructure planning. We are currently engaged, as Susan said, in the five-year update of the Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan, a blueprint for reducing long-term disaster risk. This plan emphasizes breaking the cycle of disaster, recovery, and repeat damage. It shifts our mindset from reactive to proactive, helping us to protect lives and property before the next big storm or emergency hits. Locally, we're investing in stormwater and sewer system upgrades. These upgrades improve capacity for growth, and they help manage increasingly intense storm events caused by climate change. We can't always predict the next crisis, but we can plan for it. And I will continue working to ensure that Blacksburg is prepared, resilient, and supported by strong regional networks. Thank you.
Thank you. Joel?
So I love everything that I've just heard. I think the boiling water notice was definitely a wake-up call because then it's, things like climate change, harsher storms, that was a very like real experience for a lot of us. So definitely our infrastructure needs to be prepared, our stormwater needs to be able to manage, increase storms with increased intensity. The approach I do like is kind of seeing what other places have gone through and experienced, so reaching out to like Asheville, figuring out what they have to do because they were definitely, I was there about two months before Hurricane Helene hit, so seeing the damage on the cameras was shocking. And different things like ice storms, wildfires are definitely issues I have concerns about, living very close to just nature. And I think the town's mitigation plan is a great place to start. And I think after this meeting, I'm going to go and read it.
Thank you. Let's see, where am I? Back up there? This next question is related to public safety. Do you support community policing as an approach for the Blacksburg Police? And this one, we'll start with Susan.
I absolutely support community policing, and in fact, that is the philosophy our police department has been using, at least since as long as I've been on town council and probably before. Chief Wilson, three police chiefs ago, said to us, he did not want people to be terrified of the police. He wanted people to, to trust the police and come to the police when they needed help. And I think that our officers do a really good job of that. I, as a young person here in Blacksburg, there were a couple of times I had encounters with the police department, and they did treat me very nicely, not, not reading me the riot act, but, but seeing where I was in a situation and, and handling it with care. Currently, our police chief, sorry, our police force have been using grants to work with mental health professionals, and that really deescalates some mental health crisis situations that some of our residents have had. And even when the grants run out, our town has decided that we are going to fund those mental health professionals to help with those kind of situations. And I do think that that really is, is one aspect of, of good community policing. So I'm not saying our town is like Mayberry, but, but I think we have a really wonderful police force.
Thank you. Daryl?
So this one is very interesting for me because I grew up being afraid of the police. And realistically, in the world that we live in, I still am. The one place that I'm not is Blacksburg. That's the one place I actually feel safe. The community policing obviously works. If I can go from being afraid everywhere I go to being very comfortable once I hit, get past Christiansburg's border. Now luckily, our, our police don't, they don't work with ICE. They are very, very, very nice and kind individuals. I think that everybody should actually take this model on a little bit more. Community policing is one of the safest ways to ensure a safe community, but we also need to ensure that nobody is scared of the other people in the community. So we need to do more such as community building, having town events where everybody can meet in one place, or at least maybe from certain neighborhoods, similar to how Pete was doing with his popsicles in the park. I actually went to a couple of those and got a chance to meet a lot of people from this town. I feel safer because of that. I hope they also feel the same way. But we don't know unless we give that a try. Let's do something like that. Let's bring the community together instead of being siloed out. I don't feel that we're a divided town in any way, but I do feel that we retreat back into what we feel is comfortable. By going out and building community with each other, I think we'll be able to figure out that all of our neighbors are kind, and we should look out for every single person in this town.
Thank you. Lauren?
Yes, Chief Wilson, few police chiefs ago, was so amazing about, he really centered building relationships with students and residents during calm and positive times so that the community really did trust our police force. And that is a tradition that has really gone, gone on through multiple police chiefs that we've had. As mentioned, we have social workers embedded in our police department that help with mental health calls to help de-escalate situations. One of the major issues that our police have is when they do have a mental health crisis, they would have, one, if they didn't have that social worker there, they had to de-escalate that themselves. Two, they would, if that person needed to go to an emergency room for the mental health crisis, if there were no available beds in our area, they were driving as far away as seven hours and having to stay with the, with that patient in the emergency room, which took the police out of our area for that amount of time and then left that patient there in that faraway place. So recently, we've had, we have a mental health crisis center in Radford that has, I don't know how many beds, but if someone, it keeps people out of the emergency room and it allows them to have less than a 24-hour hold if they're in a mental health crisis. But I do want to mention, I, I attended the Dialogue on Race Summer Summit this past weekend, and one thing that was really, that really stuck out for me was that Dr. Wernie Reed mentioned that in Montgomery County as a whole, black motorists are pulled over three times as like, as often as white motorists. And that is something that I would like us to research at Blacksburg, to see if that is true for the county as a whole, or just if that's true at Blacksburg as well, and what we can do to decrease those racial disparities. One, oh, I can't say one last thing. Never mind. Thank you.
Joel?
So I do want to, I think, commend the Blacksburg Police Department. All of my interactions with them have been incredibly positive. And I think when you go to our community events like Stepping Out, they are there, and they, to me, are very approachable. Recently, I saw one of them was actually riding a bike. So the Blacksburg Police Department has a, a bike unit so that they will patrol kind of downtown on a bike. And I think, what a great way, because when you see a police officer on a bike, you're seeing their face, you know, they're not hiding inside of a cruiser. And what that does for people to just kind of see them and make them more approachable. So I also would support things like increasing funding so that they would have social workers to partner with them to respond to things like mental health, so that officers don't have to wear so many hats, where they're, you know, kind of the catch-all for all of the needs in the community, so they can focus on things that they really need to do. And then we would use other types of workers to handle the other things. So I think the community policing approach that Blacksburg has, has been working well, and that's something I would continue to support.
You know, going fifth here, you're going to, you're going to hear quite a bit of the same things that the other candidates have said. So I might keep it pretty brief, but I would say I'm absolutely supportive of community policing. I think it's a wonderful model that we've seen be very successful here in Blacksburg. Lauren, you, you took it from me there too. I was going to mention the Dialogue on Race. It is an amazing conversation that our community kind of engages in that's just outside of the police force, but I see police involvement whenever I go to the Dialogue on Race. It's amazing to see people, you know, officers that actually do attend that and really want to take those kinds of conversations seriously. Those are difficult things to do sometimes when you're actually in a police or an emergency scenario. So the ability of them to proactively play a role in the Dialogue on Race and do things like that is, really shows the great work that the Blacksburg Police Force does for our community. I guess the last thing I would say is I, I think that police, in some of the conversations I've had with them, a lot of them don't live in Blacksburg. And I don't mean to make everything about housing, but I do think this really shines a major light on the fact that affordable housing, missing middle housing, and housing that can help support the people who work in our, you know, public service sectors, really can't afford to live in Blacksburg. And I think we've got to do more to create a situation where we can find housing that is appropriate for people who are going to be working in those types of jobs, teachers and things like that. And, you know, again, it's not all about housing, but I do feel like that it's really sad when you think about the fact that a lot of the Blacksburg force doesn't actually live in Blacksburg. And that could really increase the ability for them to, you know, have outreach into the community.
Thank you. We've covered a variety of topics. We're getting close to the end of our time. We still have a large stack of questions here. We could probably be here all night, but I think this next one will probably be our, our last question. And it's, it's a little bit of a general question about your philosophy of working together as a town council. And I'm going to expand that since Blacksburg is a town that's located in Montgomery County and very close to Christiansburg, another town. So we've had some references to some of the many other intergovernmental groups that you on town council engage with. But how would you work together with the other local government entities in the region to pursue your goals as a member of town council? And I'll start this one again with Daryl.
So I don't find it very difficult to work with others. I tend to, I tend to really just let people know I'm there for the work and I do my thing. I've had to do that for many, many of the groups that I work with. In the union, there have been arguments that happen as you're trying to figure out what to do as a steering committee, or my other experience with it where I am the local elections, the local elections chair. So for the entire state, for the United Campus workers, I have to make those decisions when we need to make it, or when we have an election. It's very, very difficult, and people are always going to have different ideas. You can't shut them down. You can't just say that their ideas won't work. It's about working with that person, talking through what they're talking about and how they're planning an idea, and seeing if yours can meld with theirs. If it can't, then have discussions with those people. Make sure that you actually talk to them fully, rather than just throwing them to the side. Most people in this town want to help. They want to be, they, again, they want to be in a community with their neighbor. They want to find a way to do what they need to do to make sure that everybody here is okay. Because when we're all okay, we're stronger. We need to, and I know that it's difficult sometimes, especially with the way that the entire world is right now. Everything seems so up in the air, but you have to look at the people across the line and really look them in the eye and say, it's okay for us to not agree, but we have to figure out what we're going to do about these problems. Put your assumptions to the side, do your best to avoid your bias, and just get down to the root of the problem and fix it.
Thank you. Lauren?
I feel very fortunate to have worked for eight years on a really collegial town council. We all get along really well, and I feel like we have really good conversations, and we get to the, the root of issues without being controversial. Regarding regional collaboration, that makes Blacksburg and the entire New River Valley stronger, more resilient, and better prepared for the future. I represent Blacksburg on key regional boards and commissions. I currently serve on the Montgomery County Tourism Board, the Economic Development Council, and the New River Valley Agency on Aging. These roles allow me to be a voice for Blacksburg in shaping regional strategy on tourism, economic growth, and quality of life. We are not an island. What's good for our neighbors is good for us, and I work to make sure that collaboration is a two-way street. Our regional partnerships support critical shared infrastructure. Through the New River Valley Regional Commission, we partner across jurisdictions to manage and fund shared services like the Airport Authority, the Water Authority, the 911 Authority, and the Train Authority, which will be very soon bringing passenger rail to the Christiansburg Station. These are investments no single town could manage alone, but together we can deliver them effectively and efficiently. Collaboration builds resilience and opportunity. From crisis response, like the COVID-19
From crisis response, like the COVID-19 vaccine effort, to long-term planning, we've shown that working together gets results. Regional collaboration helps us attract and retain businesses, coordinate infrastructure investments, market the New River Valley as a vibrant, welcoming destination. And whether it's disaster preparedness, economic development, or transportation access, our strength lies in cooperation, not isolation. I'll continue showing up for Blacksburg at the regional table because the decisions we make together shape the future we share.
Thank you. Joel.
So I would definitely be interested in collaborating with the other municipalities in the NRV. I think we really are stronger together. And so having those conversations, the way I would approach that is, one, start having them. I think if I'm appointed to Town Council, then you have an opportunity to serve on those committees to start figuring out what are the issues we're having as a region and working together on those. The way I approach disagreements is always, I'm working with a person. A person that is worth of dignity and respect for being a person. So it shouldn't get emotional. I shouldn't be insulting if we have a disagreement. That is one of the things I think I have been discouraged by sometimes where I will see our current Town Council, they will make a decision, and the comments they will get from the public are really disparaging. And I think, even if you disagree, it's okay, make it about the idea and not who's sitting on council and making it personal and assaulting them, calling them, you know, names or those type of things. I don't think that's appropriate, and that's not how I would work with others. What I would like to see is definitely, you know, collaboration and just being willing to listen. Even if someone has different ideas than you, sometimes that makes your ideas better because it's something you haven't thought about before. I'm a really big bicycle advocate. I love what it does for kids. I love what it does for me and just helping me move my body and get around town in different ways. Coming from Christiansburg, Christiansburg does not have access to a lot of the great biking infrastructure that Blacksburg has. And so that is something for me. I would love to be able to ride my bike with my kids to the new Amtrak station in Christiansburg so that we don't have to leave our car parked there and leave that space for someone else. That's an example of a conversation I would have, but I would listen. Thank you.
Thank you. James.
Yeah, collaboration is really something that's very important to me, and it's something that I feel like I've done in my professional career. I kind of try to think of myself oftentimes as a catalyst. I think there are two really good examples of that in my kind of recent past. One is my work with the Go Virginia grants that I've done for economic development. Those are highly collaborative grants that are pulling in finances from lots of different localities. We held an event at the Pulaski Innovation Center. We were partnering with Batataut County, working with the City of Roanoke, the County of Roanoke. We did lots of outreach and really looked at that as a collaborative project because the region that you're serving is actually all of those spaces. And so I have lots of friends and people that I've worked with to deliver programming, to help do outreach in those communities. And I really feel like that would be something that I would lean on. I also know a lot of people who are in kind of non-government organizations but support that kind of work. So I'm a consistent member at the RBTC and going to technology-focused events that are happening at the CRC. And I feel like those kinds of partnerships are really integral to the kinds of things that I'm doing. The other side of that, too, is that I've worked and handled strategic planning at Virginia Tech, and it was called Beyond Boundaries at the time. And I think those relationships are critically important for our community. And I feel like I would be able to really work with the university and open that door to look at that for housing, look at things that we can do to help students and support them in our community, how we can use the university and the university can work with Blacksburg. And also, that work in strategic planning really shows my style kind of as that catalyst or someone who works with lots of people. We had people who were staff, faculty, deans, people from the Provost's Office, President's Office. And really, I'm a listener who's taking lots of information from lots of different people, trying to find a way to bring that kind of thing together and build it into a cohesive message and vision.
Thank you. Wow. Great timing.
I saw the timer out of my eye.
I'm a team player, and I play well with others. One thing that a former mayor, Mayor Rortum, said to all of that council was, "We'll have a vote. We won't agree necessarily," he said, "but I encourage you, when we leave this room, that whatever the result is, we all, seven, work really hard to make that result the most positive thing we can make." And I, coming back to something Lauren said, I think that every council I've been on pretty much has done that over the years. And I hope whoever wins this upcoming election, that that spirit of teamwork still is here. Many, many localities across the nation have terrible elected governments with people raging at each other. And again, we aren't like that, and I encourage all of us to keep that, keep that good record. As far as regional collaboration, I'd like to talk about some of our regional connections that we already have as long as my time runs. Some of these I'm on, some Lauren has been on, some neither one of us are, but somebody in the town are on these things. The Greater Montgomery Liaison Committee meets monthly and includes the mayor and the vice mayor of Blacksburg and Christiansburg, the town managers, the Montgomery County Administrator, and two members of the Board of Supervisors, school superintendent, and school board members. That's a great way for our county to talk about concerns and to get to know one another. I represent the town on and am vice chair of the New River Valley Regional Commission, sorry, Regional Commission, and it does meet monthly, and it has representatives from the local counties Floyd, Puglaski, Montgomery Giles, all the towns, and those three counties, and the city of Radford, and our three universities, New River Community College, Virginia Tech, and Radford University. And again, it's a great space for regional cooperation and sharing of ideas and concerns.
Thank you, Susan. I'm gonna have to call time on you. Thank all of you for your thoughtful responses. Thank all of you for your thoughtful questions. All the candidates will now have two minutes to give closing remarks. And you're welcome to revisit any of the issues that we've discussed or new issues. But again, you have two minutes, and we'll start with Lauren.
Thank you again to the NAACP and our League of Women Voters, and for all of you being here tonight and caring enough about our community to be a part of these conversations. Blacksburg is a special place, which is our tagline, not just because of our beautiful surroundings or our thriving university, but because of the people who live here, work here, raise families here, and give their time and talent to make it better. Serving on Town Council isn't about titles or politics. It's about people. It's about listening, learning, and rolling up our sleeves to do the work. I've done that for the past eight years, and I'm asking for the chance to keep doing just that. If you're looking for a leader who shows up, who listens, who builds bridges, and who believes deeply in the power of community, then I'd be honored to earn your vote. Let's keep building a Blacksburg that works for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for taking the time to be here tonight. As someone who grew up in the NRV, who studied at Virginia Tech, has worked in Blacksburg, and who's raising his young family here in town, I want Blacksburg to continue being a place worth celebrating for children, college students, young professionals, families, and seniors alike. As a candidate, my priorities revolve around three things: connection, resilience, and livability. That means reforming our zoning and land use policies, encouraging not just more housing, but more types of housing at different price points. It means making walking, biking, and public transit safer and more comfortable and more accessible for everyday life. It means building neighborhoods where people can truly live, work, eat, grow, shop, play where they live, not being required to drive to do those things. It also means being transparent about our town's finances. We should all be able to see clearly how we're doing so we can make informed decisions and be prepared for unexpected financial challenges in the future, whether from the economy, the climate, or situations with the state and federal government. We need to be able to take care of our needs financially, no matter what happens. Blacksburg is a wonderful place to live, to grow up, to study, to raise a family, and to grow old. It's a place worth building our lives around and investing in. My goal is to maintain that spirit as we grow so that we can leave this legacy of Blacksburg for future generations to enjoy. I'm passionate about serving my community, and I want to continue to invest in the relationships and partnerships our town has and needs to move us forward. I've been an active participant by completing our Town Citizens Institute, by serving on our Housing Committee, volunteering as the treasurer for the NRVBA, and leading conversations about our town through Strong Towns Blacksburg. I hope you will give me the opportunity to continue to grow into this role of leadership with our town by voting for me for Blacksburg Town Council this November. I would be honored to serve you. Thank you.
Thank you. James.
All right. This afternoon, as I prepared to come to this forum, I took a drive around Blacksburg and campus. And I've reflected upon how much our town has changed in the 25 years since I graduated from Blacksburg High School. We've seen dynamic shifts, new challenges, and exciting opportunities. And now we stand on the cusp of even more change in the next 25 years. When elected, I will work tirelessly to build more housing, not block it, create opportunities for families to live and to thrive here, expand mobility and connectivity across our community, accelerate clean energy adoption, grow cultural and recreational opportunities, work collaboratively with other governments, and most importantly, listen to constituents and stakeholders to make better decisions. I ended that drive, and I took a walk on the Huckleberry Trail. It reminded me of just how beautiful our community remains, how much it deserves leadership that prioritizes families, supports businesses, and plans for smart growth. I'm James Harder, and I'd be honored to earn your vote on November 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan.
I want to thank the NAACP and the League of Women Voters again for organizing this forum, and to thank each of you who are participating. I am running for reelection to Blacksburg Town Council on a platform of shared community values: diverse, affordable housing, a high quality of life for our residents, smart growth, abundant recreational opportunities, openness in government with active citizen participation in civic affairs. As an incumbent in the Town Council race, having served five times, including four terms as vice mayor, I am running on my record of service and accomplishments. I have a deep understanding of the processes and the complexities of town government. I have been especially active in downtown revitalization work and efforts to bring more affordable and diverse housing options to Blacksburg. As an engaged citizen, I have a deep understanding of the values and the concerns of the community and a vital interest in our town's future. I have a broad experience as a leader, as a facilitator, and as a consensus builder, and as a grassroots activist in a wide range of civic and community organizations. I am passionate about what I believe is right, and I'm also a good listener. I understand the art of compromise. I believe in civility and diplomacy in government staff and elected officials. I have enormous energy, and I'm very organized. I am responsible, and I have a strong work ethic. If reelected, I will continue to be readily available and responsive to all the people of Blacksburg, and I will work tirelessly, as I have in the past, to live up to my family's motto, "Leave the woodpile higher." If you believe I have been a valuable steward of Blacksburg, I ask for your help. Please talk to your friends. Visit my website. Share your ideas, your questions, and your comments with me. Place my campaign sign in your yard. Your support is hugely appreciated. And most importantly, I ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Daryl.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters and the NAACP. I greatly appreciate this opportunity. And thank you for all of you being here in the room with us. It would be a little bit odd if there were just empty seats and we were filming this thing. But having faces to look at as we're going through makes it a little bit easier. All of us up here would absolutely do an amazing job. We're all great people. We all care about this town. There's a certain, a certain change that I think we need because I think we need a new, a new lens to look at things through. I have the worker experience. I know what workers want and need, and I will never forget that because the worker is the average person. We are all the average person here. We are all workers. We all want community. Let's work to build community in that way, where we support each other, rather than looking across the street and saying, "Oh, that's a nice yard. I'm gonna go back inside." I think we can, we can take our goals in, such as less expensive housing, supporting small businesses, which I think we absolutely need to do. It would be nice to have more retail locations. And of course, transparency. These are all big things. And from what I've heard from each person up here, we are actually very transparent. I would, it seems as though there's a disconnect from Town Council to getting that out into the community. Let me be the one that leads in letting other people know what's going on on Town Council, Town Council. I have that time. I have had to make difficult decisions time and time again. And I will be glad to do it for the town of Blacksburg. People look at me and they don't like me, and I've had to live with that my whole life. Luckily, I found a town like Blacksburg to live and love.
Thank you. Thank all of you for your engagement with the community, your commitment to be here tonight and share your thoughts with the audience. Thank you for being here, engaging in democracy with us here in Blacksburg. And let's thank all of our candidates. Aaron has some closing announcements and reminders about upcoming events.
So thank you. Can we first, again, give our moderator a round of applause? I promise you, we could stay here all night. There were a good fifty, I feel like it was like 50,000 questions. But it was so many questions, we couldn't get to them all. And so I encourage each and every one of you to have continued dialogue and conversations with the candidates who are seeking your vote. I am sure that they look forward to answering lots of emails, Facebook posts, whatever you want to throw at them, so please do that. I also want to give an apology because, and I'm gonna fuss at my proofreader when I get home, me. Joel's name is incorrect on the slide, so he is Joel Goodheart and not Gearheart. I don't know who Joel Gearheart is. But I do apologize. And again, my proofreader is gonna get a good fussing out when I get home.
Take it easy.
But I do also encourage you all to please connect with both the NAACP and the League of Women Voters on Facebook. The best way to get information about the events, candidate forums, other educational forums that we have is by being on the Facebook. We post all of our events there, and that's a great way to do that. Our next candidate forum starts in Christiansburg next week. I also encourage you all to attend that because, as you heard here, none of our work can happen by itself. So what affects Blacksburg affects Christiansburg and vice versa. So I encourage you to come to that. And please remember, early vote begins when?
September 19th.
September 19th. Good job. All right, we'll see you all next week. Thank you.